Good morning, members. We're former quorum and it's already time to start. While we are inviting the officials to join us, so I want to ask you this question. It's not very meaningful to have three minutes rounds. So if you agree that I will add one more minute to it, and that is four minutes. But there's a risk here. We are not able to finish by ten thirty. If you agree. Well, I can extend the meeting by fifteen minutes. And if you all agree that I can extend it by another fifteen minutes, then we can make it. Should we give it a try? Four minutes each members, each member.
Let us welcome government officials to this briefing. We have Dr. Cole Wingman, Secretary for Food and Health, Mrs. Miriam Lai, Permanent Secretary for Food and Health, Professor Sophia Chen, Under-Secretary for Food and Health, Mr. Christopher Wong, Deputy Secretary for Food and Health, One, Mr. Philip Chan, Deputy Secretary for Food and Health, Food, Two, Mr. Clamun Leung, Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene, Dr. Gloria Tam, Controller for Center for Food Safety, Mr. An Wong, Director of Agriculture, Fisheries and Conservation, and Dr. Lau Chau-Ming, Government Chemists. Thank you. I just came to an understanding with the panel members. So we will venture to allow each member four minutes for questions and answers. Briefing from you, Dr. Cole.
Thank you. In terms of food safety. We have a couple of points that. With a couple of points raised out particularly in the PA and there are also some ongoing initiatives. Food safety is very important to public health and to raising the living standard of our citizens. Well, there are two initiatives in the PA. First, setting up of a five hundred million Sustainable Fisheries Development Fund. And second, to align fees and charges for municipal facilities and services in the urban and anti-regions. The purpose of setting up the Sustainable Fisheries Development Fund is to. To move towards high-end fishing for the industry. The money will provide financial assistance for projects and researches conducive to the sustainable development of the fisheries industry. The assistance might compass areas such as monitoring, protecting and enhancing fish resources, as well as promotion of best agriculture practices and sustainable fisheries operations. Well, because of the banning troll, we, the trolling ban, we have introduced a number of measures to help the fisheries industry already, and this is a round of help for them. We're going to consult the trade and other stakeholders before finalizing the details of the fund. And we will also. Report to the panel our progress and apply for funding from LedgeCo. And the second new measure is alignment of fees and charges for municipal services and facilities in urban and anti-regions. It's been twelve years since the abolition of the two municipal councils and fees and charges are different in the urban areas and anti-regions. We're going to align the fees. And as a first step, we, the lower rate will prevail where the fee or charge for certain facility or service diverse between the urban areas and the anti. And this will include license fees for fixed pitches and itinerary licenses and the fees for Cambaria urns and also license fees for restaurants and also. And liquor licenses. So this will mean forty-nine million dollars for gone for the administration. And we have not reviewed the fees and charges since two thousand, so we will conduct a review. We will bear in mind the affordability of the public and also the user pay principle upheld by the government for a long time and will try to strike a balance between the two. I'd like to talk about ongoing initiatives. First, assistance for hawkers. The government is concerned about the operation environment of hawkers to improve, so we continue to improve the physical outlook and also device safety matters of hawkers. So we have just launched an assistance scheme covering about four thousand three hundred onshore hawkers and forty-three fixed beach hawker areas. That we will provide a one-off grant or excise payment to hawkers who reconstruct their stores at the same locations, relocate their stores, another pitch, spaces or chose to surrender their hawker licenses. We are now discussing with the stakeholders, i.e. the hawkers. When our discussion has come to a more advanced stage, we will apply for funding from LedgeCo that will be probably in the summer. And then. We'll take various measures to upgrade the facilities of hawkers. And in a meeting earlier this month. The panel has a number of measures in, a number of proposals for us to improve the viability of market, to review the function and positioning of our markets. So I agree that we should first consider the functions and positioning of these markets before we come back. We know that the panel would like us to come back in April. And we will continue to monitor food incidents and to ensure that food-related regulations are complied with. We are very concerned about the suspected discovery of problematic oil in cooking oil last August, I mean, last December. We've already explained to the panel. On top of our regular food surveillance program, we're going to take a number of measures, which we have shared with members. We will. We will conduct an other food surveillance. Operation on available cooking oil in the market at different levels. And we also have a proposed action level of BAP in cooking oil and that will form part of our food surveillance program. It will be tested under the program. And we will also. We may consider the exemption of, for exemption of licensing for premises carrying on the business of bottling or canning cooking oil in view of the hygiene concern. And as for the labeling requirement for following, follow-on baby formula, well, we are now in the process of consultation. And we will also extend our food surveillance program to cover. Eggs. Because from time to time, there is the outbreak of avian flu all over the world. And this is a disease that can be spread by poultry eggs. So we will include poultry eggs in our surveillance program. And Colombia, we will very actively try to increase the supply of urns in Colombia. We have explained to members what we are doing. For instance, the design of Sha Ling. And it has already got approval of PWIC recently. Well, by twenty-two-one and twenty-twenty-two, I think we can offer about two hundred thousand urns. And as for private Colombia, we plan to introduce the regulatory, the legislation on, a regulation of private Colombia. And we also promote a more environmentally friendly way of disposing of ashes. That can include sea burial and also having memorial gardens for ashes. And you might have already noticed a new round of API on TVs on this. The legislation. The draft legislation will be submitted to council in the fourth quarter, that is before the end of this legislative session. Thank you. Can you stay until eleven AM? I believe so. Thank you. Our three minutes is not really very meaningful, so I will exercise my discretion and extend it to four minutes each. So. So I hope members can agree that we extend our meeting to eleven AM the latest. No objection? Okay. Mr. Wong Kwok-hing, Vincent Fang, Claudia Mo, Joseph Lee, Kind of Chang-Tang Ka, Pio Chan Chi-Chun, Mr. Wong Kwok-hing. Thank you, Chairman. Two questions. As from elected member of the urban council, I welcome the administration's decision to align the fees and charges for municipal services and facilities in the urban and anti-regions. In particular, I welcome the decision to adopt the lower rate for the sake of the public. Regarding hawkers, lic, liquor licenses and also other licenses, when can we see unification of all these licenses? Because during the urban, the municipal council date, we asked for unification of the licensing regimes. So I like to ask when this will be done.
And also in the secretary's speech, he mentions that there will be legislation to regulate the milk products. Or formula food for babies under thirty-six months will be subject to regulation. This is a must, but what is the timetable? So two questions. Secretary.
Chairman. The two measures will have to be implemented through legislative amendments. The first one, alignment of fees and charges of the two municipal councils or former municipal councils. We'll come back later to this panel to give members a briefing and then we will proceed to legislation. I wonder if the director has anything to supplement here? Director?
Well, as the secretary has said, when we want to change the fees and charges, we have to amend the law. So the first step is to consult the panel and then we proceed to legislative amendment. This will be done under the negative vetting approach. And if necessary, members can extend the scrutiny period. The objective is to achieve this by the end of this year. That is, the alignment of fees and charges will be achieved by the end of this year.
Well, according to the panel's working timetable, you are going to come back in July to consult us on the amendments. Is that the plan now? Or would like to do it earlier? If possible, we'd like to do it in April. Dr. Tam can also supplement. Dr. Tam?
Well, we are conducting a consultation exercise. It's going to be completed today. And then we are going to do the drafting. We would. Ask the Department of Justice to give us the draft. We would like to have it tabled in this council within this legislative year. Well, I welcome the clear timetable to legislate for the regulation of infant formula. I hope this can be put on record. I still have some time. I would like to talk about cooking oil. Today, the secretary has mentioned something more. And that is the regulation of cooking oil is now no longer as uncertain as it was. So are you going to have regular checks on, and then a regulation regime will be imposed? Can you confirm this, secretary? Five seconds. So the questions have been put to you, but I have to enforce the four-minute rule strictly. So we ask for a written reply from the secretary unless some other members also raise the same questions. Mr. Vincent Fang, like Mr. Wong Kwok-hing.
Well, now, the government has finally decided to align the fees and charges after twelve years. After the alignment, it said that you are going to conduct a review of the charging policy and the concept behind the different fees and charges. So are you saying that after the alignment, you are going to increase the fees and charges later? Second, on infant formula. They contain calcium generally. Oh, they, they, they cover a lot of products. We are talking about infant formula and food. You want to introduce a nutrition labeling system, but they are not produced in Hong Kong. We are an importer. We import all these products. So what kind of nutrition labeling will be required? Is it going to be the same as those required by other jurisdictions? If you introduce something different. What can the importers do? Would you be asking them to affix another label after importation? Well, that's the same issue we raised when we discussed the general nutrition labeling scheme. As for the market hawkers, two hundred million dollars for the four hundred or four thousand or so hawkers. Can you tell us what a standard pitch is going to be like? We want our basars and hawkers areas look more or less uniform in appearance and it's clean and tidy. If you have your own design, please talk to the hawkers so that they can tell you whether the design is practical. Because last time, they thought your design was rather expensive to use and not very user-friendly.
Secretary. After aligning the fees and charges, there will be a review. I think we can never say that fees and charges will be kept at a certain level forever. So there must be an adjustment mechanism. So we start from the very concept of setting the fees and charges. If you say after the next adjustment, the fees and charges will be frozen forever, that's just not realistic. As for the nutrition labeling, I'll ask Mr. Chan, Deputy Secretary, to supplement. As for the. Appearance of hawkers stores, we want to make sure that it's safe for fire prevention and also the. Nice, nice-looking in appearance. Maybe they sell, they need different designs for selling different eye products and goods, but our safety is important. I'm asking you to talk to the trade so that they can get something easy to use and practical. Yeah, certainly, we'll talk to the trade. Do I still have time to ask Mr. Chan to supplement? No, sorry. Perhaps you can supplement in writing. Ms. Claudia Mo and then Mr. Joseph Lee.
Thank you. I'm asking this question of the Director of Agriculture, Fishery and Conservation. Some fishermen have complained that. If this cannot be done today, how can they help them? There's a fire involving a number of fishing vessels in Twim Moon. It took the FSD forty minutes to arrive on the scene. And they're saying that they cannot even survive now. How can you talk about future development? And for the troll ban, you have E M R one point two billion dollars for compensation. Some eight hundred million have been given up, given out to two hundred vessels. So some people say that there are some phantom vessels because they have counted and they, there have never been so many vessels. So how many vessels have been given compensation by district if for previous reason you cannot give us a full list? But there is also a mechanism to launch an appeal. But it's an open-ended. Is it true that they can launch an appeal all the way up to twenty forty-six? And if you cannot answer this question today, I would like to have a written reply as soon as possible. And then I would like to return to the bureau level. According to the SPCA and the AFCD, there's no need to have an animal police force. But the community do not see this eye-to-eye with you. You are spending public funds in your operations, so I would like the secretary to reconsider, to indicate whether you're willing to consider to set up an animal police force. This is a policy question. You have two minutes. I don't think they can get you full answers. Which of the questions would require an oral answer? I would like to get an oral answer for the animal police force. Mr. An Wong? No? It's for the secretary. Okay, okay. It's a policy question. I can only say that this is not just about one policy bureau. It cannot be decided by one, just one policy bureau. I'm not happy at all to see animals being abused. And I have sympathy for such a suggestion. But can the government make a decision and get it done? Well, I have to talk to the other policy bureau before I can give you an answer. A follow-up. Which other policy bureau are you talking about? Any timetable? I'm talking about the Security Bureau. Timetable? Any timetable? Maybe I can give you a written reply. Then the Director of AFC. Compensation for fishermen. The fishermen are saying that this is a complete mess. What have you got as a preliminary response? Thank you for giving me this chance to explain. We have one point three nine billion dollars. We have received one thousand one hundred seventeen vessels. Ninety-five percent of them say they are operating in Hong Kong waters. That's just not possible. We cannot accommodate so many vessels. I believe more than seventy percent of them are operating outside Hong Kong waters. They also got license for issue by the Guangdong authorities. So more than a hundred are not actually trolling vessels. Or they are not equipped to do this. Or they are not vessels to collect fishing catch. More than seven hundred of them are out of Hong Kong waters most of the time. More than, just more than two to three or two hundred, three hundreds are local vessels. I would be happy to supplement on the criteria for compensation later. Dr. Joseph Lee.
Chairman. According to C E, there's no minor issue when it comes to livelihood. But it's strange that the policy address doesn't even mention food safety. Perhaps he regards this as a minor issue. It's fortunate that the secretary mentioned this in his paper, but no money is given to him for food safety. So we have to be very careful about the development. I'm concerned about testing. The secretary has said that cooking oil is subject to test, testing. We have major festivals around the corner. Perhaps you should do more testing. Last time, I was very concerned about Gloria, whether she has got enough money to do the testing and checks. So please check this. So should that be a big routine checking program and testing program? Also, with regard to health food, last time you said you are not going to regulate them, but there are so many of them. And then there are some not legally registered and people don't know whether they are medicines or health foods. Although the policy address is silent on this, this is important to safeguard people's health. So perhaps you can tell us more about the regulation of health food. And then also, I, we have been seeing the rising prices of beef and pork. Although the policy address is also silent on this. Are you going to open up the market or are you going to do something to stabilize prices? Because if you don't, you cannot afford a fresh pork or beef, you can always buy the frozen chilled beef or pork. Secretary.
Well, I've been monitoring the figures regarding pork and beef. And actually, I will be looking at the projected supply for the coming couple of days of beef and pork. Earlier, on some days, there were only three thousand odd pigs or cattle imported. For recent days, it's more than four thousand. So it's on, on average, the normal level. We have three importing agents. We've asked them to maintain the level of imports. If this is maintained and yet the pork price continues to rise, then we have to look at whether there's any special reasons, whether there's snow or it's a seasonal thing. And then next, we have to look at whether the prices on the mainland are also on this same trend.
Well, should the market be liberalized? I maintain an open mind. So we are doing a study. We have to ensure that liberalizing the market can have an impact on price. Because if the supply has no flexibility, then opening up the market might be counterproductive. And as for unregistered western medicine, as I said, our regulation is not useless. For health products to contain western medicine, that is a main problem. Well, there have been prosecutions because we have enforcement action and in the long term, we have to carry out more study. Please very quickly tell us whether you have enough manpower to test for food safety on a seasonal basis. All right, I'll give the floor to the controller. Please be quick, get ten or second minute, eight to ten minutes. Speakers off mic.
Every year, we take sixty-five thousand samples. As already at the most, the highest level among other.
As already at the most, the highest level among other jurisdictions. Uh, that is one sample for every hundred persons in our population. And I also our laboratory facilities. Well, what do we talk about those done at our laboratories and also microbiological tests? Well, these two laboratories are also of world class standard. Uh, we've been recommend, uh, commanded by organizations such as W H L. Uh, Mr. Lee is concerned about our regular routine and also seasonal surveillance. Well, we do have a breakdown. We've just announced the findings for hairy crabs. And in winter, we will target at hot pots and also um uh pung choy, uh popular Chinese food, a Chinese dish. And then mid autumn festival, we target at cakes. So to put it simply, you have, you have enough manpower. Doctor Kenneth Chan. Well, I have a baby who's eight months old at home and my, my wife complained to me that she uh didn't, she, she cannot get formula from our baby and she didn't know what to choose. So we must put consumers' interest and consumer safety on the forefront. So we must have enough supply, otherwise I can't have a good night's sleep. And also of fees or the charges. Well, uh, this is about alignment of fees and charges of municipal services and facilities. Of course, we will know, no one will object to this step. The question is whether there is a timetable for this legislative year. But as to whether there will be an interdepartmental discussion of review of the fees and charges now. We have to take note. We welcome the alignment of fees and charges now, but in future it, there may be an increase of fees and charges. So will they complete the review this year and have new proposals for fees and charges? And also legislation on private colimbaria. Uh, there are illegal developments such as occupation of private land and some unauthorized private colimbaria might be phased out. Uh, what will the administration do to assist or to protect the interests of consumers? And also, um, the children or of all this with um uh, of the deceased. All right. Uh, whether we have a timetable for reviewing the fees and charges? I don't have a timetable. So you won't come, you won't have it done within this year? No, no. Uh, yes, we have to get it started, but we don't have a timetable for completion. And how we deal with private colimbaria that have to be faced out? Thank you. Uh, regarding private colimbaria. Uh, we adopt a three-pronged approach in our regulation. First, we step up publicity. As we all know, this Development Bureau has announced two lists of private colimbaria to tell consumers all of those that comply with our land requirements. Secondly, we have produced A P I's to encourage the public to be careful in choosing uh private colimbaria and to read the terms and conditions carefully before making a decision. And thirdly, as the secretary said in his introduction, we will move towards licensing regime to enhance the regulation of such establishments. Doctor Chen, the question is, um, many people already caught. They have fallen trapped to private colimbaria. Uh, when the legislation is passed, if they have nowhere to seek redress, they may come to the bureau for help. So I'd like to ask while considering the legislation, has the bureau considered how to address the problems faced by consumers? Yes, in regulating private colimbaria, I mean, you must take this into consideration. When we have anything definite, we'll come back to brief this panel first. Mr. Tang Kapiu to be followed by Mr. Wong Yook Man. A and H of the paper. Assistance to hawkers and improvement to public markets. However, uh, I don't want to discuss with you existing hawkers and markets, but I'd like to ask whether you're going to review the whole system and decide to build more new markets and issue new hawker licenses. After the abolition of the two municipal councils for new towns such as Tongchung and Tishan Way, there are no public markets, no on-street shops. Well, in Tishan Way, there is a, a market operated by the H D Housing Department. As a result, um, there, there is some no choice for the public. You may say that according to the Audit Commission, the vacancy rates of F V H D markets uh is high, but you can compare Tongchung and Mong Kok and also the third generation of now new towns. I think they are, you're not comparing like of like. So can you review the whole system? Hawker policy now. Well, you may think that it's not appropriate to issue new coffee markets. Well, in new towns, uh, there are no publicly run uh bazaars, hawker bazaars. The link Reed can decide to close all the shopping malls, say at ten P M. Um, so will you review the system to give choice to the public? Secretary. To improve the operating environment of public markets, as I said earlier this month, when this issue was discussed, members gave us a lot of views. And we will compile these views and review the functions and positioning of public markets. In so doing, we will certainly touch on the issue mentioned by Mr. Tang Kapiu and then we'll come back and discuss with members. At the last and also previous meetings, uh, this was a deadlock. We talked about a review of the fees and charges. We proposed um a mechanism, but they refused to discuss with us and they want us to start with the positioning of public markets first. Now, I don't think we can have an across the broad approach. Uh, Mr. Tang Kapiu is correct. In some places, the public markets, even with a few stories, they are very busy and popular. But at some places, um, the utilization rate is low. And it's true that in some new towns, they are on street shops and there are none in some other places. Well, I cannot preempt what will be the outcome of the review. But I do agree that we should have differential treatment for different districts. However, the positioning of public markets, perhaps I can sound out your views here. If members feel that the facilities are very bad currently, then they must be improved first. But must they be so improved, so, so, so good as to be comparable with that run by the Reed and also private sector? That may not be necessary. So we will have to confirm the positioning of a public markets first. There might be some level of subsidy. And if you want uh, the market to be competitive, we cannot make it very beautiful because then prices will go up. So I have to come up with a, a positioning that is in between those run by the link reads and also the private sector. Mr. Wong Yook Man, we will not welcome every move by the administration. After all, it is the duty. And if they do not do a good job, we can criticize it. As legislators, we must monitor your performance. Well, the most I can do is to um support your policies. So legislators should not say we welcome what the administration plans to do. I hope officials will not learn from Mr. Six Eight Nine. Uh, we don't know what you mean after a month of words. You said that to a certain extent, we will certainly do this and that was this is Six Eight Nine style. We don't know what you really mean. Please be specific and concrete when you answer questions. For instance, we're concerned about the prices of pork and beef. You just go and take a look in the, in markets. There are so many complaints. Now, a beef is over a hundred dollars per catty. You say that this is a free market. Actually, there is monopoly. So you should. Well, the Food and Health Bureau is very close to lovely hood issues. You manage over a thousand staff members and they are monitoring and regulating hawkers and there are daily confrontations and disputes between these officers and hawkers. So secretary, please be more specific and let us know what you're doing. So that if legislators want to welcome your measures, it's okay. But if you are so vague in your answers, this cannot do. There are two parts in this briefing on hawkers. You have to go back to your principle. What is your hawker policy? You say that, well, in the committee, you talked about fees and charges. And you want to talk about the positioning and the policy. Well, this is something you can't do. Well, well, you have to really to, to decide what's your policy first. Uh, do we still have on-street hawkers? No, because you want to improve um public hygiene, sooner or later, they will be eliminated. So secretary, you have to understand that your bureau um has everything to do with people's livelihood and we want our answers to be concrete and specific. I don't know how you're going to tackle the problem of rising prices of beef and pork. All right, you have one minute to answer. Yes, I fully understand what you say, Mr. Wong. But I think I've been very specific in my replies. First, beef. I am open as to liberalizing the beef market. However, I must understand the operation of the market first. Because usually when you liberalize a market, prices will go down, but they may not be the same for all markets. Some experts have told me that sometimes it may be to the contrary. So I must have scientific data to support my decision. And for review of hawker policies, although I did not exactly use the term hawker policy, I refer to, to, to examining the functions and positions of public markets. This is what I meant. Otherwise, I won't be able to, to confirm the position. Oh, now, I have every respect for Mr. Wong. Uh, you asked me to be more specific. To be fair, I think I've been very specific, to be fair. Well, if Wong Yook Man, you had been to the briefing by S L W at eight thirty, I think um, uh, the secretary here is really more specific and concrete.
Chairman, this paper has fourteen pages and more than two are devoted to the fisheries policy and promotion. But there are only two paragraphs on agriculture and they are not talking about agricultural policy. It's about promotion of agriculture in respect of organic foods. So you attach importance to fisheries, but you do not charge agricultural industry. You have five hundred million dollars for fisheries, but what about agriculture? And even for organic food, you don't have funding, you have no timetable. We have no agricultural policy as such. Uh, at the end of last year, in at a meeting of the Development Panel, many norse N T farmers came to complain. And they even cried on that occasion. Uh, they are, they were complaining that related to support was given. And some mentioned Dr. Cole's name. Uh, there is no agricultural policy to help them. And even quite the contrary, they are trying to make things difficult for farmers. And they may intercept water supply, underground water because of drainage works and they cannot do farm, farming anymore. And some landowners would rather let the land weaken and unused instead of letting farmers so work on those land. So have you actually pay any attention to agriculture? Or are you saying that you, you just let them continue like what they are or you just try to phase out agriculture? Because they stand in the way of development? Secretary. As I said, in an exhibition of fisheries and agricultural produce. Uh, Hong Kong is a small place, so that there are many cores, many demands on our land. If we stick to the traditional mode, that is, we do it by manual labor and we produce low value produce, that's not going to help to be successful. So we would like to support our agriculture to move towards the high value added sector. We are talking about organic food and high value added uh food produce. And we are, we'll be able to have multi-layer farming by using organic farming methods. Because we don't have a lot of land and there are so many hills. As for exactly what we have been doing to help agriculture, I think it would be fair if we give Dr., Mr. Wong, the director, a few minutes to explain. We'd equip them with skills and knowledge. We also the land's equipment to them and tools to them. A few days ago, at Mong Kok, there's a fair, more than two hundred thousand uh people attending the event. And we have the, the new fish, uh, new types of fish. I went to Ping Chee. The farmers complained to, to me and I had no answer to offer to them. Uh, Mr. Helen Wong, I want to follow up the question on animal abuse. Would the Food and Health Bureau take the initiative to liaise with the police and the D O J on law enforcement and also prosecution? Second, my question, second question, collaboration. We should try to get more land for public collaboration. But it's very slow. In paragraph twenty-three, you set out a timetable. That is by twenty twenty-two, we are going to see another batch of niches. So it's a wait of a further nine to ten years. And we don't know when those at Sha Ling will be available. Every year, we have tens of thousands of people passing away. So if you keep accumulating the numbers, then twenty twenty-two, we are not going to solve the problem. As for private collaboration, what are you going to do to those who have already bought the niches? They are illegal, the collaboration, obviously illegal. They are in residential areas. Will the F V H D or will the F H B take any action to enforce the the law and also then how to help those affected? Uh, and also will the Bureau encourage local food production? Because we import so much food. As for imported food, you, how much can you do in terms of testing? As for imported food, you, how much can you do in terms of testing? Can you cooperate with mainland producers? So as, so that, so so that they would be advised not to use certain bans or substances or pesticides? Look at the B A P, the E U, the standard is two milligram and mainland ten milligram and you want to go for ten milligram. What's the justification? You are saying that the risk is not high, you are not sure that there's no risk. And also for every kilogram of oil, uh if it's the level of B A P is up to twenty uh muji, uh you feel some sense of urgency. So it's a jump from two muji to twenty muji. Are you being too real, too lax about this? Can you really tell us that what we eat is actually safe? Secretary, to save time. I I just answer the first question, the answer is no. And the second question is about collaboration. We are saying that there will be two hundred thousand niches. That doesn't mean that there will be none, nothing in between. But of course, the bulk will come after twenty years. Because for a large collaboration, where is it going to be located? Uh, we're talking about Sha Ling with a capacity of over two hundred thousand. Another one is in Changzhou, Tianming, uh with a capacity of more than a hundred thousand niches. Of course, when we consulted the district council, they asked us to build even more. In the meantime, we have forty to fifty thousand that can be made available in batches. Turning to food safety. We are going to promote local farming. But we are an urbanized community, a huli community and also with just over a thousand square meters in size. So we cannot really rely on traditional the mode of agriculture. We have to encourage a higher technology content in agriculture. As for the risk assessment and food safety, I I need to ask my colleague to supplement. Where I've been enforcing the four-minute rule, perhaps you can give us a written reply? We're again going to send you a memo. Mr. Li Chong Yan and then Mr. Tommy Zheng. Having heard the secretary, it seems that we have to wait for the residential units for ten years while we are alive and for niches after we have died. And there's no agricultural policy in Hong Kong, so you just leave, let them die. In the past, uh thirty percent of vegetables are produced, were produced locally, but now it's very low. There's a high potential, but we have never mentioned agriculture in in talking about uh major industries for which we have an advantage. I want to get the written reply for my answers. Uh, I did ask the same questions last time. I would like, I would like to know whether the government has a policy not to build any market. We haven't built any in in the past three years. Why do we want to have markets? Because you don't want to buy back the link, it's very costly. And it's been said that we should have competition with the link. How can you do that in Tsinghua if you do not build any market? There are seven shopping centers in Tsinghua, all monopolized by the link. Only one market is operated by the housing department. If you follow the market rent, uh that means that the rents are by the link and everything will be expensive. So are you going to build a market in Tsinghua, secretary? There's a fair, a bazaar that are not operated by you. Uh, F H D doesn't want to the manage any bazaar, I I. Well, at one point, we want the F H D to manage a dawn bazaar, but they don't want to do this. So it's now is the Tonghua Group of Hospitals are doing this. Uh, but a bazaar is not very useful because it cannot offer you the daily necessities daily food, no vegetable, no fish, no, no, no pork can be sold in the bazaar. Secretary. When it comes to management of markets by the F H D, there is a difficulty here. I think you all understand that in managing markets, many citizens would expect that the F H D to enforce the rules strictly. But at the same time, we have to offer assistance to the hawkers. So the F H D uh faces difficulties in this regard. I I want to say this because I want the director to understand that I just, I understand the difficulties. It's true that we haven't built any new markets. After the meeting held earlier this month, uh we said we would went, we'll go back and reexamine the role played by markets, by public markets. But the roles we have in mind may not be the same as that support by the public. We will look at different uh districts and the need, the different needs for market. For example, we will go to Tongchung to see whether uh food and restaurants are are there to serve people. We'll do some brainstorming and set the policy. Oh, you might as well also visit Tsinghua. Okay, uh uh in my first district visit, I I did go to Tsinghua. Mr. Tommy Zheng, I want to ask short questions and I hope the secretary will offer equally brief answers. Uh, restaurant license fees, uh one hundred nine, paragraph one hundred ninety-three and the license fees. The newspapers said that that will not cover restaurant license fees because those fees were charged by the F H D. Is that correct? Concerning restaurant fees and concerning the alignment of fees and charges, liquor license fees and restaurant license fees would not be covered. We talk about going for the lower if the two sets of fees and charges are different. So are you talking about covering restaurant license fees and liquor license fees? Uh, yes. So there will be a reduction. So the news report is incorrect. I I don't know where you got it. Because I have read a newspaper report that liquor and restaurant license fees would not be covered. Uh, and uh, well, I welcome this. This is the first secretary. And then we have had four directors. When they want to align the fees and charges, they want to go for the higher ones. So I welcome the alignment and going for the lower if there's a difference.
I'd like to express my concern about public markets and don't really expect any reply from the secretary. If you check our records, we have discussed public markets in the past and I have uh sit on uh this panel since day one and I was chairman for a few terms. This is a consensus among different political parties. The whole legislature and all political parties agree uh 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 of the view that wet markets should be kept and we should allow hawkers or store operators to be self-reliant and all political parties support. You're giving resources to public markets. In the past, um store operators were asked to chip in for the installation or retrofitting of air conditioning in old markets. Now, this is no longer the case. If you need more resources to improve our wet markets and uh and to build new markets, we'll support you. Uh, it was once suggested that the Market Street wet market should be pulled down. And you said that the district council supported you. I was strongly against this because you can't say that the market is not viable. Uh, what supporting facilities do you want? As pretty, as pleasant as the markets of the Langrid, I don't think so. But whether you have parking facilities or whether the corridors, the passages are wider. Now, if you can improve the environment, operating environment, then I don't think uh store operators would mind if you want to discuss rent with them. And you go and check the, you you said that you would pay a visit to Shenzhen uh to check the brief, the beef prices there. And you said that the industry would be involved. I am waiting for this, I will, I'm happy to accompany you. Now, you're worried that opening up the market may not lead to a better supply of beef and pork. But I think at least that would give the public such an impression. All right, a short answer is when are you going to pay a visit to Shenzhen?
I think I, I'm talk about uh looking at the pork and beef markets on the mainland and compare prices seriously. Now, I don't mind paying a visit there, but we have to seriously compare the prices of a beef of comparable quality. And we also have to to uh to see if indeed there is any flexibility in the market. If there is flexibility, then you may see some results by opening up the market, otherwise it may be useless. Doctor, um, well, I was shocked by, to hear the replies by secretary. Uh, because Siwa Long said that the P A is not just for one year, but to cover five years. And the secretary told us that currently they have no plan to build any um F H D complex, that is markets plus other offices. And he said that he had to pay a visit to Tongchung to see whether there is food available at night. Now, I can tell you that uh with the exception of uh the shopping mall there, there is only the Langrid shopping mall and most of the residents are grassroots. And uh you know that uh food or prices are almost the highest there. And the transportation cost is twenty odd dollars. So if you have no intention to build wet markets there, that means we can give up hope for this term of government. Tongchung and Tsinghua are very special. There is a major planning flaw here. Now, for Yunnan and Tianming, there is a way out. But for Tsinghua and Tongchung, there is none because transport fares are high. Is it true that the government is going to score zero in these two towns? Allow me to correct what I said. I said that currently, uh we had no intention to build markets, that's true. But in the light of the discussion and with this panel last time, we had to uh have a full review of our market policy. I believe that's the consensus of this panel and trusted to me. All right, can the secretary tell us when you can complete this review? Because we have a a feel of Siwa Long's government. He has so many commissions and committees. All right, can you tell us, when can you come back to us and tell us the um conclusion of your review? Secretary, that's very clear, I have to come back in April. As regards whether we can have the whole review completed, whether I can map out the positioning of and roles and functions of public markets and our policy. Of course, I may not be able to do that in April. Can you give priority treatment to the two new towns, uh least of uh most affected? Well, I will consider uh the whole thing. All right, I don't think I can squeeze anything out of him, I turn to another issue. Uh, we know that uh it will be ten years before we have a new collaboration. And yet hundreds of from consumers are forced to choose from lists one and two of the F H D. These are unlicensed private collaboration. There is nothing in the paper to tell us what will happen to these um consumers. They are rather helpless when faced with these two lists. They can do nothing about it and what has the government, what does the government have to offer? Well, uh, this is just a list of ongoing initiatives. But I think one or two meetings back, there was a very detailed paper on our policy on collaboration. So we have a three-pronged approach first, we will secure the construction of public collaboration as far as possible. But the fact is, it, we have to wait a bit longer if we want to increase the supply in large numbers. Secondly, we will regulate private collaboration. And thirdly, as I said, we're trying to change people's habits and thinking. More and more people can accept the idea that um uh earth burial or placing ashes in niches are not really absolutely necessary. So we are promoting sea burial and memorial gardens. But still, it will be one or two decades before we can do anything about this or to change people's behave, uh thinking. My turn, I welcome your decision to review uh public market policy and their positioning. I see there is an interaction with this panel and as chairman, to be fair, I want to welcome your attitude. However, if you just visit so inspect market on your own or with your colleagues and you have differential treatment for different districts, yes, I don't think this is a wrong direction. But would you consider more interaction with the industry? Uh, Tsinghua and Kowloon City and Fahyun Street are very different, um so are the markets. And all these markets have uh store operators that can give you their views. And Mr. Tommy Zheng is correct in saying that there is a cross-sectoral agreement in this panel. You can rest assured that we can give you the greatest support in in terms of resources. The question is, previous secretaries or directors were not so, were not so ambitious as to review the positioning of the public markets. You know how the director of audit works. He will measure your work according to your policies. So if you have changed, if you change a policy, the director of audit will also change the way of assessment. So I want to know if you will set up a communicative platform with the store operators. Second, I think you have a lopsided treatment for fisheries. And you have a little concern for agriculture. Perhaps it's because the C E wants to thank a support from the fisheries industry using their five hundred million uh fund. All right, uh we have a great demand for uh local vegetables and poultry. And according to your paper, you have to regulate organic farm produce and you want to recover the land. Uh, this is almost the last straw. So do you agree that there is a disparity treatment between the fishery and agriculture industries here? And how are you going to help local farmers? Our farming policy is such that, given our constraints and hilly topography and urbanization and shortage of land, we must move towards high-value-added practices. As regards whether we treat our farming industry differently, I hope you understand that farming is difficult. But for fishing, because of the need to protect the environment and our fishing resources, we have exercised or we have imposed a ban on trawling, and that has dealt a heavy blow to the fisheries industry. So the Fisheries Development Fund, Sustainable Fisheries Development Fund, has been set up to enhance our assistance for the industry. That doesn't mean that we snub our farming industry. We must help our agriculture, fishery industry to move towards high-value-added products. For instance, there have been the transfer of technology. I'm trying to see whether there is sites are not wanted by anybody. There should be some. If there is land that cannot be used for housing, I'll try to secure the sites. But you know, you cannot just just farm on any site. Even if I can get a site, it might be an excellent field site. So we might have to build another layer on top of the land and use aquaculture or horticulture. Well, I hope, I think you don't want another committee. We'll see how we can interact with store operators of different districts. This is difficult because the constraints and needs of all districts are different. I have already proposed two contacts to the F S, and they shadow Hong Kong, Kowloon, and the N T. Yes, we will make use of them.
Thank you very much, secretary, for staying for another ten minutes or so. We'll ask the secretary to prepare a memo for the secretary for outstanding questions. We hope to receive a written reply from the secretary. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.